For the regular meeting of the Mount Clemens Board of Education to order, please. Call or roll?
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk? Ms. Sonia?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
A quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the founding of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you step to the microphone, state your name and address. Also be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also be mindful, you may not receive a response for your particular inquiry here this evening. And last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Hello. My name is Sheila Peoples. I live at 116 Jones Street. Can y'all hear me?
Yes.
I live at 116 Jones Street, Mount Clemens. I was, um... I worked for Seminole Academy in the lunchroom. So I may be a little bit emotional because what they said about me is not true, and that really bothered me. Now, I feel what they said about me, if they felt that I wasn't doing my job, how, why, why was I there so long? Why was I still in the building if I wasn't doing my job? So you goes back to edge of staff, and you put all these things on me saying, "I wasn't doing this. I wouldn't... I was just being, um, I was being nasty towards the kids. I wasn't going around helping the kids." Different things they said that I was not doing. I was belittling the kids. All I was doing is sitting down in the lunchroom, eat my lunch. And that is not true. That is not true, and I didn't like that at all. The time that I was there, I was there for months. You should have been tapped me on my shoulder and told that I wasn't doing my work. I went to work every day, and not one person ever stepped to me and told me that I was out of order. I was not doing my job. Not one person ever told me that. And that bothered me for them to send that to edge of staff, and it's not true what they said about me. Now, they know. They got a situation going on in Seminole School. I don't even know if you board members ever go, go to Seminole School, just happen to do a drop-in, drop-by to see what's going on in that school. The school is out of control. It's out of control. I spoke to the superintendent about it because she was in there. I spoke to the new principal that was there. That really hurt, just to see how those kids are out of control. For me, I felt bad for the teachers because the teachers went through a whole lot. They go through a whole lot with them kids. That little bit of time that I spent with them and all that they gave me, there's no discipline for those kids. They don't, I mean, they get to do whatever they want to do. They're like literally want to beat up you, jump on you. I had a little girl, fourth grader, that gonna walk up to me and bump up against me and had to beg, "Mr. Brownlee, please, Mr. Brownlee, I'm human. Get this kid. Please get this kid away from me." She can't be walking up on me thinking that they supposed to beat on us, hit on us, and do whatever they want to do. And then, the bullying, the bullying that's going on in schools, you got kids there that come to school to learn. Why should those kids have to be afraid to come to school to learn because somebody's always bullying them? That's not right. That's not fair to the ones that want to learn. They need to have something for the parents. The parents need to be felt accountable for their actions that their kids do. And then they always say, "Oh, no, we can't put them out of school." Well, what happened to that young lady that brushed up against me? Did you give her some time out of school? Did you give her a couple of days out? No. This kid comes in there, she come in the lunchroom, she do whatever she want to do. And everybody act like they scared of her. For real? She walk around, kick, hit other kids upside the head, push other kids. She get to do whatever she want to do, and everybody act like they scared to mess with her. I don't understand that. And then for you just to flip it on me, don't flip it on me. That's something that y'all not doing. And like I tell y'all, I had a situation, I walked off the job. I did quit. I quit. Because I was scared of me. I was scared of my action, what I might do to this little girl. This little girl run up on me, doing all this, like, "What you want me to do? You want me to run from you? No, you shouldn't even walk up on me like that. I'm an adult. You the kid."
Ms. Peoples, your time is up, Ms. Peoples. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Still open, citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Before we move on, I would like to, uh... Chair would like a motion to amend the agenda to add a closed session for the purpose of negotiation updates. And since we won't be making any decision coming out of that executive session, I would like to place it as item number 13, after board comments, and then item 14 would be adjournment, since we're not going to be taking any action on anything out of the executive session. What we'll do, um... We come out of executive session, and we adjourn the meeting. So Chair is requesting to amend the agenda to add item 13 as closed session for the purpose of negotiation updates, and then make item 13, uh... 14 now, now 14 would be the adjournment, 13 would be the closed session. Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to amend the agenda? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Monk? Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Sonia?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, action items. Under the action items tonight, item 5, Consent Agenda 5A, Approval of Minutes. Item 5A1, The Minutes, March, May 18th, 2022, Regular Meeting. Item 2, June 9th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Work Session. Item 5B, Approval of Bills for Payment. Item 5C, MHSAA 2022-2023 Membership Resolution. Those are the items under Consent Agenda this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion regarding the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Moved by Member Monk to approve the Consent Agenda.
Support.
Second, Member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor under the Consent Agenda? Item 5, Approval of Minutes, May 18th, 2022, Regular Meeting. Item 9th, 2022, Committee of the Whole Work Session. Item 5, Approval of Bills for Payment. Item 5C, MHSAA 2022-2023 Membership Resolution. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Board Secretary, I have reviewed the minutes for May 18th and June 9th, and they seem to be in order.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor regarding the Consent Agenda? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Sonia?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6, Curriculum and Personnel Committee.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I would like to, um, move to do an amendment on item 6C, and we deal with both of those individually instead of together? There's two, if I'm, if I'm understanding.
Correct. There are two.
So we'll vote on them individually instead of voting them?
Oh, I wasn't gonna black, hide them. If anything, take the motion, it would be individual because of A, B, and C, I'm not gonna, I wasn't gonna ask them together.
No, I mean for renewal of contracts, there's two contracts.
There's two contracts.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, understood. Uh, so are you putting that in form of motion, sir?
Yes.
Uh, Member Monk has a move to, for item 6C, to separate those two individual contracts.
Support.
Moved by Member Monk, seconded by Member Mc... Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor, and that is to vote on the two contracts separately? Hearing, seeing, none. Call or roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Sonia?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, back up to the top. Item 6, Curriculum and Personnel, 8, King to Seminole Move. Madam Superintendent.
So, um, you should have a little packet before you, uh, just... My thoughts of going through the logistics of the move from King to Seminole. So if you take a look, the very back page is... Of your packet is a map of Seminole. And, um, so what you'll see is, um, right now, we have five classrooms at Seminole without any teachers or students assigned, and those are in yellow, the empty classrooms. Um, we have three class, um, although there's stuff in those classrooms, just like your basement or your attic. When it's empty, it gets filled up. I, um, though was through there today, and I was surprised, two of the rooms are quite full, but the other rooms could be pretty easily cleared out in about a half a day, probably. So then, we have three classrooms that are occupied by staff that don't have a teaching caseload and could be placed in other spaces at Seminole. Room 202, which is where our social worker is, doesn't need a full classroom. Um, room 308, which is Ms. Pancatay, she does MTSS coordinator, and she has, she does have meetings in that area, but she does, also does not need a full classroom. And room 310, which is Teresa Gearing's room, and she uses that as a reading space for kids. She does some individual reading, work with students, and she's got beanbags and things, a little library set up in there for the kids. We have 13 classrooms at Seminole that have students assigned, but we have not yet hired a teacher. So there are 13 rooms that are empty, and if you look on your map, that's the pink. So that's where you'll see all the open spaces where, um, we need a teacher. Number four, we have 12 classrooms that are currently staffed with teachers and students are assigned. So if you want to go through this, we have our media center, which is Ms. Folks. She's a special teacher. Then, if you go straight up, going from the very center, you look, and then in room 102, you have Ms. Gale, and she teaches music. Into the 300 wing, so up at the upper left, we have Ms. Wheeler teaching third grade in room 304. Those rooms, as you can see, have not been colored in at all. Room 305, which is Ms. Hendrickson, she is a resource room teacher, and she would like to move to the 400 pad because her students are older, are more fourth and fifth grade, and she would like to move to the area where more fifth and, fourth and fifth grade students are. Room 306 is Ms. Justice's room. That's our resource room. Most of our students are CI. Room 307 is Ms. Bolt's room, second grade. Room 309 is Ms. Buscard's room, second grade. And then, moving over to the 200 wing, where we have classrooms that are staffed, we have room 203, which is a first grade classroom. Ms. Hood, she's our new teacher, is there. And almost kitty-karmer, like straight across, diagonal, rather, is Ms. Kroll in kindergarten. Cutting down to the 400 pad, we have room 403, that's where Ms. Mata is, room 405, which is where Ms. Aller is, and room 408, which is where Mr. Paula is. So we have two fifth grade teachers and one fourth grade teacher that have staffed around. So looking on... My next stop is I looked at room assignments, and where do we need teachers and where are there possible moves? So what you see highlighted in yellow would be the possible moves. So we start out, um, room 401, of course, would stay. We just need a teacher in there. We need a fourth grade teacher. That teacher resigned today, actually. Um, room 402, she's moving to Louisiana. She's moving to New Orleans, so... Um, room 402 is where Ms. Hendrickson is, and she, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hendrickson is in room 305, and, but this is an open space in the 400 pad that we can move her possibly. Room 403 is Ms. Mata. Room 404 is, um, it's an empty classroom, and I would move Mr. Paula into that classroom so that you have your fifth grade teachers together, because you'll see that room 405 is Ms. Aller, who is also a fifth grade teacher. Heading across the hallway, um, looking at room 406 and 407, um, we need teachers in both of those rooms, and that's where Pohai would be, if you're back on your map. I'm kind of reading the map and reading my comments at the same time. Room 408, and doing the move, could, would be ECSE. Room 409 could either be ECSE or a resource room teacher, and room 410 could be either ECSE or a resource room teacher. There currently is a need for a resource room teacher. There just isn't a teacher there. So, um, looking in the 300 pad, you can see, this is the place where we really need a lot of staff, first grade teachers and kindergarten teachers in particular. In, um, oh, I'm sorry, the 300 pad, I'm ahead of myself. I jumped to the 200. So room 301 is currently empty. We, it looks like we might actually need an additional second grade class. We have 81 second grade students, and there's only two teachers. So we may possibly need an additional teacher, and that's where they would go. Room 302, we would put a third grade teacher into that classroom. It's, it is currently a third grade classroom, and we need a teacher there. Room 303, um, that is... If, if the goal here is to keep classroom teachers next to or close to teachers that teach the same grade level, my suggestion would be to move Wheeler from room 304 into room 303, or room 302 into 30... Move one of them so that we can have the two third grade teachers together. Room 305?
Just...
Yep.
Does it really matter if they're in classrooms right next to each other, or as opposed to one room, somebody else, and then another classroom?
Well, you know what? I would, I can look at that at two ways, but first of all, when we look at our PLCs, and we only have two third grade teachers, we only have two fourth grade teachers, two fifth grade teachers. It makes sense that they can be together, that they can look out their doorway and ask another teacher a question. Or sometimes, at least I remember back to my teaching days, and you have a student in your classroom, and sometimes you need a little break, or they need a little break, and I would send a student to my neighbor's eighth grade classroom, and she would do the same with mine. It was kind of a little give and take, and that piece is easier if you're right next to each other. Does it have to happen? No. But it, it does help with, and it also helps with PLCs, just being able to get together and plan. Being right next to each other makes all of that easier. So anyways, you can see that going through this list of, I've moved, what we've basically done, looking at this map, is we've taken the 400 wing, and we've created fourth and fifth grade on one half of it, and ECSE, Pohai on the other half of it. The 300, the 200 wing, whether, is where, right now, we have kindergarten and first grade. Looking at that wing and making it kindergarten and GSRP. Bringing, just like we had talked about at the retreat, bringing those two groups, bringing that two groups together. And looking at program and being able to talk to each other and having the kids get to know and the parents get to know. GSRP parents will know who our kindergarten teachers are. And then over here in the 300 pad would be where first, second, and third grade is. There's two third grade, two third grade classrooms. There's two second grade currently, possibly three. Right now, we have 81 kids registered. With 81 kids, we need three classes, and we have three first grade classes as well. So what happens, so just, um, heading through the timeline of events. So in May, I met with some key staff members at Seminole. This was after, um... After our, um, after our work session that we had had, I met with, and the, um, retreat, I met with key people at Seminole. I met with, the principal was there, Melissa Losick was there, who is the King principal. But Patty Hill was there, Sherry Michaelwitz, the Abting principal, was there, and, um... Dina Pancatay was there, and we actually met in Dina's room, and those are pretty much the leaders of the school. And I started out by just asking their suggestions. What do you think? We, if we move King here, where would we put, where would we put those classrooms? What, what kinds of shifts and changes would we do? And we, lots of ideas got thrown back and forth, and we really settled on keeping or putting GSRP and kindergarten together in one pad. That made sense to them as well. So, um... They did think that we didn't, we don't have a lot of time to do this, but we do have empty classrooms where we can start the moving. So then on May 27th, I had a Zoom meeting with the staff at King, and it, it didn't go well, frankly. It was, it was a little bit, it was a little bit negative, with the King staff being very concerned about GSRP kids not being with the ECSE kids. They were also concerned about ECSE kids on one side of the four, of the 400 pad, and on the other side, having fourth and fifth graders on the other side of that pad. So that was a concern for them. I talked with, um, some of our consultants from the ISD. We had Joanne Elkins. She is the early childhood person at the ISD. And also Teresa Hasenauer, a former elementary teacher, and some others. And they didn't, they didn't think it was a bad idea. They thought it was a good idea, especially with our fourth and fifth graders, giving them some responsibility with some of the littler, younger kids. Big brother, big sister, coming into the classrooms, doing some reading with the kids, changing the dynamic of, and giving the fourth and fifth graders a little bit more responsibility. And the other one concern was during a fire drill, the kids would have to exit through the same door. So you've got fourth and fifth graders, big kids, going out at the same time the ECSE kids are going out. And, and that would be concerning as well. So I, I thought through that, and in walking through and looking at this map, room 406, which is designated as Pohai, but could be any of those rooms, ECS, any of the room that's needed, has a door that goes right to the outside. So they wouldn't have to go, the students wouldn't have to go through the entrance, the exit door right here. They could go through the pad, and they could go right out that one door. But there is not that many students in that program. It's not like there's even 50 that would be in that, that program. So that's, that's a possibility, but that, coming with the concerns from that group, really caused me to rethink the move. I really was like, "Oh, wait a minute, because you're my experts. Maybe we do need to rethink the move and where we're gonna go with this." And then the other, for me, compelling reason to delay is that there are 13 classrooms without teachers.
I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
You're saying you got resistance, but at a board workshop, the head person over there at King stated that they were packing up and they were ready to move. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little confused now.
Yeah, I was too at that meeting, at the board.
I'm real confused. So which one is it? They didn't want to move, or they did want to move?
In, on the 27th, they were very resistant to move.
But they came around and they start packing, ready to go.
Right. Well, you know, they also got all those boxes, which Seminole people did not get, but they got boxes and tape and all of that.
So they came around.
Yes.
But, and you saying that that was one of your, that's one of, is one of your major hesitations?
Correct. Correct. That was one of my major hesitations. This is, these are the people, they're the experts with our kids. And so I was concerned about how we were gonna fit everybody in if... If...
But with them packing and ready to go, they're saying they're willing to, okay, let's, we all in. We ready to make this move? Let's go. Let's, we gonna figure this thing out, you know?
Right.
So I'm, I'm totally confused right now.
Okay. So we, the, but the, to me, the more compelling reason is that we have 13 teachers that we need. Who is gonna pack and organize?
What if we have 13 teachers we need in nine, one, 23? Then what? We gonna bump this down, we gonna kick this can down the road for a year?
No, let me finish, let me go through the list. Okay. So my plan is in the summer of 2022, is to clean out those five empty classrooms at Seminole. Get rid of the junk, get a dumpster in there, clean them out, get them ready for kids, get them ready for a teacher. We, I've already talked to Bill about a budget for the move. He's gonna set aside some money, about $20,000 to help pay for staff for this. We are gonna rent a dumpster, and we've already got ASNs assigned to this, to this move. We will be using some of our contracted staff through edge of staff. We will also be using some of our teacher employees. Patty Hill's already started working, but she's working in the teacher workroom over there, which is also a mess. But, um, she, her biggest plan is to get all the stuff out of 402.
So you're saying there's five classrooms that just got stuff in them. No kids, no educational activities going on.
Correct.
Just got stuff in them.
Correct.
And you plan on clearing out those five rooms this summer?
Correct.
For the purpose of what? Because there's no kids in them, because if there was kids in them, there wouldn't be junk or stuff stored in them.
Right.
It seems like there's rooms that aren't being utilized.
Right.
And so the big, you know, what is the... Since the move, you're, you're talking about delaying the move, what is the big rush to clean out these classrooms? And after they're cleaned up, what are they gonna, what are they gonna be used for? Because they're not being used now.
Okay. So my plan is to clean out those classrooms and move the Seminole teachers gradually throughout this year. So this summer, we clean out the classrooms, and we move to Paula from room 408 to 404. That puts her, that keeps that, this, that empties out this area.
You gonna move teachers in the middle of a school year?
No, I'm gonna, okay, yes. However...
And that, okay. I'm listening.
Okay. So what I would do is move to Paula from 408 to 404. So she would be with the rest of the fourth and fifth grade teachers and not by herself on the other side. We could take care of that, and this is the area where we're considering moving the ECSE and some Pohai there. Over Thanksgiving break, I would move Hendrickson. She is a resource room teacher, and I would move her to room 402. Holiday break, over Christmas break, I would move Wheeler, Bolt, and Hood to clean new classrooms, to classrooms that we have emptied, that we have cleaned, that are ready to go. So when they come back in January, the kids will come back to a new classroom, all clean and ready to go, moved in. Over our spring break, I would move the, the other first grade classrooms from the 200 pad to the 300 pad, cleaning up the 200 pad so it's ready for GSRP, and in the summer of 2023, move King to the clean and empty rooms at Seminole.
So moving during the course of a school year is easier than doing it over the summer? Is what you're saying? Is what you're, is what you're laying out?
What I'm laying out is organizing it. I'm laying it out, thinking of when I've moved, and it's easier instead of just dumping everything in the truck, if I can move this area over and that area over, so there's that. And, and Jason, I don't have teachers, so to move people this summer...
That brings me back to the question I just asked. So what if we ain't got teachers in nine, one, 23? Then what? You will kick this down the road again?
No, we will not.
Okay, now I'm glad you said that. So now, this is, this is kind of where I'm at with this. I mean, we got the numbers from Bill. To keep King, to operate King, and this is not even all the dollar amount that, what, what Bill has said, it's gonna cost us a million and $56,000 to run that building at third of occupancy. Okay? If we make the move, we're saving $81,000. But from your, from what you said, that is good for kids, is good for reprogramming going forward for jet, gee, for the littler kids, I remember that's less, huh? The littler kids to fifth grade, is good for cost-saving. It's gonna be good for the parents. But I'm hearing you saying that when you went to go talk to Seminole, Seminole was like, "Okay." You went to go talk to King, King was like, "Hmm," but then King came around. Obviously, they start packing their boxes as they're ready to go, but then now Seminole is kind of, "Well, we don't have enough time." So it seems like the, the communication got dropped somewhere with this whole move because we came out of this retreat, and everybody sitting in this table was like, "Great, reprogramming, great. Start, start, start a new identity, you know, what's gonna be good for our, 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 our kids, great." And it's all based on kids. But you're saying right now... And it's all based on kids. But you're saying right now is that it's not gonna be that disruptive during the school year with moving classes during the school year? It's not gonna be that disruptive to, to the kids? I, I got a hard time swallowing that one. I mean, I think that's really being unorganized during a school year. And you could, okay, kids, we gonna make this move, we, oh, no, we gonna change over here, then this classroom go to this part, this classroom moves over to this part. Isn't that a little bit more confusing than doing it? Listen, I'm just a board member, but I'm a well-educated board member. That doesn't make sense to me. It doesn't. On top of us running the building at a million fifty-six thousand dollars of third percent occupancy. At some point in time, this board is gonna have to stop kicking cans down the road. We gotta stop kicking cans down the road. Because who's to say this board structure is gonna be the same in September? Who's to say you're gonna be the superintendent in September? So guess what? We'll kick this can down the road to a different board, maybe a different, different superintendent. And now it's a whole nother thought process with all these eight heads thrown together. At some point in time, you gotta make the tough decision. At some point in time, I'm ready to make a tough decision based on if it's good for kids. Now, it came out of the retreat, yes. With this move, will we lose some kids? Yes, we all said that. Yes, we're gonna lose some kids. But for the greater good and for the greater programming going forward, helping our kids, we always on the same page, I thought. But now we're not.
I think it's, it's easy to make a decision in a room we were all by ourselves. We didn't have an administrator. We didn't have a teacher there. And the more I dug into it, more things just kept crawling out. It's like when you turn over rocks and stuff crawls out. That's what seemed to happen. Every time I would turn over another rock to get this to go, something else would crawl out. Jason, we can do this. We can move and get everything ready and get it ready to go and be ready in September. I'm just saying that that's a lot to ask of our custodians. It's a lot to ask of the twelve teacher classrooms.
Custodians is on, on payroll. They get paid whether they, custodian will get paid whether they push a broom or lift a box. So I don't buy that. Okay? Teachers, I believe, are willing to do for the greater good. If this move, would there be some bumps and bruises? Would there be a little bit of growing pain? Yes. But for the greater good? I'm just going back to what King was like, for the greater good, we're ready to make this move. For the greater good, they'll pack boxes packed, ready to go. I don't know. This is, I mean, we gotta, like I said, we finna kick this can down the road because I'm, I'm, I am on a island by myself again. So we're gonna kick this can down the road. And what happens if it's the same situation when we kick this can down the road? I wanna, I wanna hear what everybody else gonna think then. Because displacement, reorganization, growing pains, feeling uncomfortable, all that's gonna come whether we move now or a year later. It ain't going away. Moving a year later ain't gonna take away everything. And, and I got to say this, financial wise, we're running out of time, y'all. We gotta start making some tough decisions based on the viability of this district. We are running out of time. In my opinion, we ain't got another year. But like I say, I'm on an island by myself.
Well, the move King wants us to do is to move GSRP into the four hundred wing with ECSE and Pohai. And keep kindergarten with first grade.
Then we don't know.
And then move in fourth and fifth grade. So we're gonna have to move pretty much, we're gonna do, it would mean more teachers have to move.
Then we don't even know if our Pohai program, program gonna be around.
Correct. We do not.
We lose a part of our program, now it's even less more kids in that building. Whether they at King or Seminole.
Mr. President, is, um, item six, eight, is that an action item?
Uh, yes, it is.
We just approving the process?
Uh, the recommendation of the superintendent is to move King to Seminole, uh, you know, by September of twenty twenty-three. That's the reference, Jason, correct?
Correct.
I don't know if she's finished with, you know, her.
I'm willing to, you know, hear everyone out.
I just, I just had the question, I asked him, what, what are we looking at here? So King to Seminole move no later than September twenty twenty-three?
Correct.
Or I don't know if it's, you know, later or by, I don't, I don't know.
Before.
Before?
Before.
Have we worked on, um, already submitting the, um, the plans to get a playground for the GSRP over at Seminole?
Mm-hmm.
That's been, that's, process has started?
The process has started. They need three bids, um, from, for the ISD. I'm not sure where they are in that process. And they are out. So even if we had all the free bids right now, um, playgrounds are, are out. They're not, you know how your business is two months, yeah.
Trying to get the ISD and the state to agree that we can use a consortium type bidding process and instead of having to actually go get bids, which would speed up the process. I know that's the last thing I heard from Rob and I don't know if that's been accepted or not yet.
But in the meantime, we can pertaining to the playground, but in the meantime, I think it was brought up at our workshop that we can set up a temporary situation over at Seminole.
Yes, they need, they need to be able to play outside.
You can buy them things to play on, like scooters, that, I mean, those kinds of things that aren't actual playground equipment. We give them something to play on, the way I understood it.
Yep.
Madam Superintendent, you just laid out a four-phase program, uh, process on how you wanna make the move happen. Uh, that was basically talking about Seminole. Uh, what the process are we looking at for the King? Is that also be a four-phase process in the same timeline or are we trying to look at pushing that down further?
No.
What's your thought process?
So the thought process on King would be to move them over the summer of twenty twenty-three.
So we'll, we'll still.
Those seven classrooms into clean classrooms that are all ready for them, clean and empty classrooms over at Seminole.
So there's seven classrooms at King that we have to move to Seminole? And we still operating King at, um, full capacity?
Yes. Actually, there may actually be eight. We've applied for an additional GSRP classroom over there. So that would be nice if we got it, we get the full FTE for the children there.
You might have a question. Bill, is there any other cost savings we can do over at King while that thing is, um, on that proposed phase movement? It could be shut down a pod, it could be cut off of the heat. I mean, is there any other cost savings you see on that?
I mean, I know we already turned the heat back and the pod is not used. Most of those cost savings were staffing or utility type savings. So you might get a small amount. It wouldn't be much. Because we've already tried to do some of that as I've walked that building with, with Robin. You know, he's already done some of those things already where it's not occupied.
And that one million, that's for those seven or eight teachers in that pod?
That one point oh five million is all the programming that's in King. So that consists of GSRP, Pohai, um, ECSE and the staff, the custodial staff, the, I mean, contracted custodians, the office staff, it's all of those things. Utilities, snow removal, maintenance, all those things.
Here's my question then, is, um, once these programs move over to Seminole, how much of the cost goes with it?
Well, I would say you take the one point oh five million and subtract the three hundred and fifty approximately thousand that I said. So about seven hundred thousand go with it?
So, so the cost savings for us to move would be three hundred thousand?
Now, listen, we put up there last time at the workshop, you have about three hundred and fifty, but then you have to, there's things in there that, is it the three hundred and fifty or is it that eighty-one thousand? Because it's the question of the principal, the custodian, the secretary and the bus route. Which those things, you know, we talked last time about which one of those are doable and which ones aren't. Which ones are doable in the fall of twenty-two and which ones are more doable a year later in the fall of twenty-three?
Okay, so right now we're looking at principal, the custodian and the bus route.
Secretary.
Secretary.
And that cost would be about how much?
It's that three, it's approximately three hundred and fifty thousand. There was, and there were some utilities, small things like turning the heat back and no having, not having telephone service over there, those types of things. I don't have that list with, right with me, but those were the big ones.
Now, the secretary and custodian, are those full-time positions?
Well, they're not full year. So she's not working, uh, maybe she's working now, but.
It's a full school year plus a couple of weeks before and a couple of weeks after usually is what secretary is. Custodians are year-round.
So is the custodian doing split time between one site or another or are they there full-time?
Eric, that one is at King full-time.
So basically, leaving it open another year is gonna cost us about three hundred and fifty thousand. Because those same cost, that million, that one million, seven hundred thousand is gonna go over to Seminole. We still gonna spend that money.
Correct. And again, the most cost savings you could experience would be three hundred and fifty thousand. And that assumes not, the principal doesn't move over with the program. The secretary doesn't move over with the programming. The custodian doesn't move over and we're able to reduce a bus route because we don't have three tiers instead, we only, you know, we only have two-tier buses.
Okay. I, I brought that up because I don't want anybody that's watching this thing, they're gonna save a million dollars.
No.
We're not gonna save a million dollars.
Like every school program, every school, eighty to eighty-five percent of the money is people. So if the programming's not going away, the people costs aren't going away. Yes, there are some administrative costs and support costs, you know, support staff costs that could go away. But you're, unless programming goes away, you can never save that full million dollars. Definitely not.
Okay.
More like, you know, here, and it, you know, it's more like thirty-five percent, right? Maximum. And then some of that's even questionable, so.
Let me vibrate this back over to the superintendent. The, um, we at risk of losing the Pohai?
Yes.
That is because of?
We don't have any teachers.
Teachers.
The teachers. That's not because of the administrator?
No, not at all.
Okay. I was under the impression the administrator had to have some type of certification?
No.
No, so it's the teachers?
It's the, yeah, we got teachers. Um, one resigned and we've been, we have had a sub in there. Uh, that's the one at King and then one retired, um, in June. That was with Langworthy. Um, we had a little reception last time. And the other one has not officially resigned yet, but she keeps telling everybody she's resigning. So I don't know what's happening with that.
So let me ask the battle drill scenario then. Um, we at risk of losing that because of the staffing.
Correct.
So if, if we're looking at percentage-wise, how you weigh this? Do you feel like we had ninety percent options of losing, nine out of ten times we're gonna lose this? Or we had fifty percent? Or it's like, it's just a, just something out there we should know about?
Yeah. And what I tried to do is go through the ISD and have them keep the program here, but, um, hire the teachers. So that they would go through the ISD as teachers, they would work here and we would still keep the program here. So then we would keep our OT and our PT and our, well, we don't have a nurse anymore. Um, she quit too. So we need a nurse too for the Pohai program. So, so I, I don't know what their answer is. I don't, um, know if there's other districts in the area that would be able to pick up our kids. We have about, I guess, twenty-three.
Cause the Pohai, the Pohai has OT, PT, nurse practitioner and a few other items that's required.
And, and Paris, yep.
And Paris. And those are full-time positions on deck twenty-four seven, not twenty-four seven, you know what I mean? They're, they're here.
They're in the, during the teacher year. It's not shared time.
Okay.
Nope.
And if we lose that program, what does that mean? How many classrooms would be empty?
Three.
Three out of seven?
Yes. No. Okay, so we're moving seven over. One of those Pohai classes is at King, two are already at Seminole.
So we'll lose two at Seminole also?
Correct.
All right, that's a whole different scenario. Okay.
Yeah.
Is Seminole being staffed? Okay, this, this is my question. King and Seminole, two different buildings.
Yep.
I asked was a nurse practitioner, OT and PT, they on site all day long. So they going between both buildings?
They do.
So they're not at one building?
They're not at one building. They travel back and forth.
That's what, that, now I misspoke. When I say shares, I'm.
Okay, oh, okay. Got it. Yeah, I'm taking a shared time services and.
So why can't the nurse practitioner here, don't we have a nurse practitioner here at Henry Ford?
Henry Ford is getting ready to get shut down.
Yeah, I, I, it was in my last update, they.
Cause we do not have a nurse practitioner here.
We do not.
Nope. Henry Ford's shut down.
Okay, so we have no nurse practitioner at all then?
We do not.
All right.
I have a question.
Lot of moving pieces.
When we look at this, the cost of moving, um, cause essentially I think we talked last week that it was really an eighty-one thousand dollar savings. Is this plan more of a cost-effective plan of moving rather than packing it all into one summer and making it the fall? Is this more cost-effective when we say we're gonna save eighty thousand dollars, whether we do it this summer, are we, how much money are we spending? Cause I know that was, there's some.
The, the quote, to pack the seven classrooms, move the seven classrooms and unpack the seven classrooms. The quote provided by our custodial company was just shy of nine thousand dollars.
However, it's not just seven classrooms.
Right.
It's all of this. You gotta move all the Seminole classrooms too. So, and it's more than just seven when you're looking at a program.
Right.
Over there. So that's.
When I got that quote, it was ju, or price quote, it was just for the moves of Sep, or King to Seminole.
Right. Nobody even thought about Seminole.
Custodians also would be the ones, could be the ones to move the internal moves to.
And that doesn't.
But I didn't know how, we don't, you know, we're still talking about what, the right way, who this moves where. So until we have that plan finalized, it'd be hard to get a quote as to what it would cost to move.
But do you see this plan as more cost-effective over the next year?
I think they could be very, they're very equal. I mean, maybe slight economies of scale of moving all at one time, anytime you have, you know, you're all there and you do it at one time. But when you're talking that move, not to move inside the building at Seminole, but to move it's to King to Seminole is only eighty-nine hundred dollars, not only, but that's not a large amount of money. Whatever economies of scale you might say would be minimal. So I think they're very comparable costs, one to the other.
I got a question because it came up the last time. You said, you know, you guys brought up where that teachers won't be willing to come over the summer and move their classrooms. So I guess my question is, so they're not willing to do it over the summer, they're more willing to do it over the holidays? So they, they'll come over the holidays and move their classrooms?
You know what, Jason, I don't know. I know.
I'm just bringing that up because that's what, that was the main point. You guys said that, you know, summer, teachers are out for the summer, but.
And what would we pay them?
Yeah, but, I guess the same thing. But the same thing comes up during the holiday, cause these moves that you're proposing is during the holidays.
Right, but they would also have time to pack. So it, so for example, the one teacher that is moving maybe at Thanksgiving.
No, what I'm saying is that they'll.
September to November to pack up.
No, what I'm saying is that they're gonna still take their time off that they would normally take to be with their families during the holiday season to, to pack up and move their classroom.
But Jason, what I'm saying is that they would have three months with boxes and tape in their rooms to pack a couple of boxes every day. And then they move at, over, over the holiday break, but it's not them doing the move, it's our custodians doing that move and putting it into the classroom.
So that brings me back to my point. You're saying that that won't be disruptive to the students there if you got teachers concentrating on packing and they should be concentrating on teaching the kids.
I would think the packing would end up being whenever it is af, after school hours and that type of.
Ah, let me tell you something, Bill. These teachers are out of here. When that clock boom, they're, they're gone.
But they definitely wouldn't be the ones moving the boxes. They would have to pack their classrooms.
Right.
We, just like we would have if we're now or later, the move, the physical move between classrooms or between buildings would be done by the custodial staff.
Right.
We try to get moving companies, it's almost impossible to find moving companies who have workers.
With the move, you're eliminating, eliminating positions. Wouldn't you have to maintain? Wouldn't you have to maintain a secretary for those programs because they're a whole bunch different than the K five program? That's currently in, uh, the way everybody says that those secretaries are already overworked and you're gonna bring another layer of responsibility to, I think it's two secretaries at, at Seminole maybe?
Yep.
Uh, you're gonna, how's, how, how's that gonna work? Because you, you know, you're talking about saving by eliminating, by moving the building. Um, but I, you know, I still think you need that person. Uh, and the same thing with the administrator. Uh, is the principal that we hire, um, for Seminole, will they be qualified to be a principal over GSRP? Um, and the other alphabet, the ECSE and, and whatever, uh, pre, pre-K program that we have? Um, with that principal, since you're talking about eliminating that position, would that become up under, all that become up under the umbrella of the principal at Seminole? And are there any special additional certifications or experiences needed to do that?
Not necessarily, um, Melissa has a ZA endorsement, which is an early childhood endorsement. That's not necessary for the administrator, but this is a new administrator in a school, just heading there with thirteen new teachers. And then bringing a program in.
I will speak to, not that I know a lot about secretarial duties, but I do know over that my career, elementary schools, the size of the enrollment and the number of clerical staff in offices. In elementary schools with four hundred or less students, which this would be a four hundred or less students, right, before, less than four hundred over there.
Not, well, not if you bring over GSRP.
It'll be around four hundred. Be around four hundred. Though, two secretaries is very common in elementary schools of, in my experience, in elementary schools of, you know, around four hundred.
I, just to piggyback off of that with, each school runs with one janitor, correct, per shift, days and afternoons, right, one on each shift?
There are two custodians at Seminole during the day and one at night, Bill, I'm not sure how many are at night.
I think it might be one, I think it's more than that. I think it's four total, it's either three or four total, I'd have to go back to the invoice.
Now, if we add all of these classrooms, will we have to pull that janitor over? Can one janitor in the afternoon handle all of those classrooms?
So that's something that, that we would have to, honestly, we would have to figure out, I don't have an answer to that, which, um, is, so the ECSE and the GSRP's children eat in their classrooms, which means that there's a lot more cleanup that a custodian has to do. They're also little kids and they tend to throw up. And, I mean, I'm just saying, like, there are things that happen in a group of lots of little guys.
That amount and that cost saving, that's forty thousand dollars, so we wouldn't be saving eighty, we'd be saving forty.
Well, it depends.
Again, my experience, elementary schools, two custodians clean an elementary school of four hundred students, around four hundred students. Maybe if you get pushing four hundred, you'd be at two and a half. We have at least three at Seminole and we have one at King. And I think it's even more than that. Again, I'm not saying it's gonna be easy, but we have to start thinking about how we are outside the norm. And I can tell you, as it relates to custodians, we are outside the norm by a lot. And I know that's not a popular thing to hear, it's not an easy thing to hear, but we are outside the norm by a lot.
Bill, um. I understand the concept that the custodians might be outside of norm, but I know we just came through the COVID-nineteen era, I know it's still in it. Now, how does that affect with the cleaning responsibilities of our staff for that? Cause I, I think we ramped it up because of the COVID-nineteen issue of cleaning in essence and the whole process.
Yep.
So is there a new norm? Or is it just a norm that?
I think there was a new norm during the COVID time, when touchpoints had to be cleaned, when you had to wipe down doorknobs and you had to wipe down, you know, things in between every class and you had to clean, you know, drinking fountains or shut drinking fountains down or clean toilets more often. During, during the actual pandemic, yes, yeah, yes, districts added custodians during that time, absolutely. It's my experience anyway. My experience is many of those districts, especially ones who are, don't have a lot of resources, have scaled back on that. Because those cleaning things, one, number one, some of what we thought we knew in the beginning was different than what we know now in terms of is it airborne, is it not airborne, do you need, how often do you need to clean? Think about how much that changed, how often they were telling us to do it at the beginning of the pandemic and how much it's changed by the end of the pandemic, right? So I, I think, yes, during the pandemic, yes, it definitely, they added staff. I, I think many have reduced that back. I don't know because I wasn't here with our, our cleaning staff before the pandemic, I know what we have now, I think we have a lot.
That was when I asked, the next question was, did we hire additional staff for that, do anybody know?
We did.
We did, okay.
Yeah, we made sure that, um, when we were, that was when we were going through edge of staff and Robin was doing all the custodial piece um, and, and handling all that, but we did bring in extra custodial, um, at all buildings. Not at King, I believe, but we definitely did at Seminole and we definitely did here.
It will be interesting, cause as I met with the custodial contracted company, not about this move or not, but about how many custodians we had. And one thing that came up from them to me was how many rooms we use that aren't really used by a teacher every day, but have to be cleaned every day. Um, and think about how, whether it's a storeroom and somebody's going in and getting stuff, you still have to vacuum it, right? You don't have to like you do in a normal classroom. Um, a itinerant staff, a social worker or an OT or a PT, lots of districts, they don't have full classrooms, right? They'll have an office to meet with their kids.
Right.
An office is a lot smaller than a full classroom, but if they're using the full classroom, the full classroom has to be cleaned. We've allowed that kind of stuff to happen, which then drives how many more custodians we need. Um, another thing I talk to custodians about, I mean, this is outside of this, but just to tell you, and, and I actually tried to get and got some, you know, movement on it, having our kids at the end of the day pick up the piece of paper that's right by their chair and throw it in the garbage and, and do those kinds of things, that then makes it a lot easier on a custodian. You know, so it's just a different way of doing business and I, and I, I think somewhere we're gonna have to cut costs. And if we're gonna try to keep it as far away from the kids as possible, we'll have to look there, but. But you're right, that forty thousand dollars is, you know, in that three hundred and forty thousand. So if we're not gonna cut that custodial position, cause we don't think we can, then that affects that. But the eighty thousand was with, the custodian was capped.
Did we con, did we confirm the hundred and twenty thousand in the administrator's contract?
Yes.
Is that a thirty-day?
Yes, it is a thirty-day, um, I just wanna say that, um, she does additional things other than just principal at King. She is also our Title III and our WITA coordinator, she is also our assessment coordinator and she is, um, helping with some of the data pieces. There isn't anyone here to do that, just, just saying.
Okay, since that's been an actuality, since this person does a plethora of things, with the move consolidation, how much of that hundred and twenty thousand could be taken off the books because that program is no longer over there? You said, you know, you act like you, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is what, you know, whatever the salary.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's all, she goes, I'm sure she's full family, right?
But I'm saying, you know, what, okay.
Wage isn't benefit.
Yeah, okay, I'm, yeah, yeah, just, just, just use a hundred and twenty thousand, I don't need to know. But if, you know, we put on there, if we eliminate the program and consolidate it to Seminole, theoretically could save a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from that building administrator no longer being there. But now you said that she does more than just being administrator of that building. My simple question is, how much of the hundred and twenty thousand dollars is for running the program over at King? And how much of it for her doing these other ancillary things?
Earl, I don't have an answer, I don't have an answer for all that. Most of her day is spent, has the, has the principal at King. Right now she's, um, immersed in WITA and Title III, cause we had our Title III audit and so right now she's spending her time doing that.
I know there's a lot of questions coming on this table and I know with Bill hitting it and superintendent hitting it, you know, Earl and I, Jason and I, we've been through this before with closing buildings and staffing and everything. I don't wanna close a building and all we saving is twenty thousand dollars. That's why I'm asking these questions, because if, if we saving, if people throw big numbers out, those numbers are not the true numbers of what we actually saving. So that's why we asking these crazy questions. And I'm gonna jump back on the custodial piece, cause we cut down at the little pieces, you know, like twenty thousand, forty thousand dollars here. Then we got these big pieces, have a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we can cut also. Now, back to that custodial piece, that S R money, is that earmarked for what, safety and welfare of like air circulation, cleanup and stuff like that? Or I know we can use it for wages and everything else, or earmarked for certain things, but is that, is there something that said you have to use it for this?
The money that we have left in S R's is totally earmarked in the budget that you're about to adopt. For wages and benefit is operational cost so that our operational funding can go to the fund balance. So when it's time to have money to do whatever we need to do, whether that's continue to survive for a year or two or whether that's do capital improvements, it's there. I have none of that set aside for any of what you're talking about.
So there's no stipulations in that, that funding saying that you have to have a temperature check monitor at the front door or you have to have a, um, air circulation or additional custodial or, or COVID protocols, nothing like that?
That's on the CARES Act.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Right, yeah.
That was the money that came earlier, not the two and three, the S R's two and three that came. Kind of American Rescue Plan, I think is where.
CARES Act.
CARES Act.
CARES Act is where that money came from that requires those type of things. I agree with the, your comment about you have to look at what is enough money to make the move worth it. I, I absolutely agree with that. I just know that somewhere we're gonna have to do something. But if this is the right time, I mean, I, that's, you know, you guys decide, but I get the question about enough savings.
But I also agree with Earl though, I mean, my, my, I had that same thought process is that, and this is not the first time this has come up. We've talked about a position, but then that position comes up where's that, well, this person don't only do this, they do this, 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 this and this. Okay, but they're getting paid a salary for this job description. But they're spending a lot of time doing this, this, this and this. So, okay, if they spend most of their time doing this, this, this and this, let's cut out this salary and pay them for do this, this, this and this. I'm just getting confused because when we talk about especially administrative position, it's kinda like, well, but they do this and this and this and that and the third, it's like, okay. And they spend most of their time doing that, but their job description says administrator. So, yeah, I'm, okay, how, how much is that money is really going towards the administrator? Or being part of this grant program, being part of this other grant program, being part of data processing?
I do wanna clarify that in our committee meeting, we did discuss that this particular administrator is the only person qualified to do very specific things in the district, so she is very important to us.
And I'm not, I'm not doubting that at all.
No, I'm not saying, yeah, I didn't say she's not important.
In terms of the way the data was presented to us, it was presented to us is if we combine the programs into one, under one rule, take King out of the K equation, we can save a hundred and twenty thousand dollars by not having this position. But that's not true, because that person is in that position, but just like you said, she's the only person that does something in the district. So, again, you're not saving a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that's, you know, the question I asked ten minutes ago was, and nobody had an answer, how much can be labeled and attached to the position at King? And how much is the other ancillary things that this individual is doing?
Right.
Right, honestly, I don't know the answer to that, there is.
So that hundred and twenty thousand dollars was not a real number when it was presented to us. Because had that position just been that position, then that, that number would have been a real number. But since that was not the only responsibility that position had, that hundred and twenty thousand dollars is not a real number. And it lessens how much you will save, because you're not gonna save a hundred, full hundred and twenty thousand dollars, particularly if you have this person doing these, these other things that that she's the only person in the district is doing them.
And that's why we need accurate numbers in order to make an accurate decision.
I'll go further than that, how much does that position is being paid out of like Title I or a different grant money?
Much of it.
Well, it's not Title I.
Well, I'll use that as an example, cause I don't know all the numbers.
Between Pohai and GSRP, they are paying a good portion of it.
As administrative position.
I have to go look at my staffing spreadsheet.
Is that labeled as administrative position over those programs?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'm gonna go back and say again, I don't know all the grant names and terminologies, I know there's a whole bunch of letters, a whole bunch of numbers, that's all I know. But I know there's a grant paying for that position somewhere.
So, so we just had.
The hundred and twenty thousand dollars was an accurate number. What wasn't accurate is how much of that time could or could not be reduced based on the move.
So if this person is getting paid out of that grant money for a Pohai and we lose a Pohai program, that person's for a whole year will still receive that money for a Pohai program.
And there, there's nothing says too that if that, those programs are moved to a different building and there's a different building principal, that part of that building principal's time can't be charged off of those grants.
Okay, let me just clear up a little bit here though, the part of her salary, it was not her salary, the Pohai program paid for the special ed director. GSRP pays for her program, for her salary, but Pohai does not, that was part of the, the special ed director.
So her total salary falls under GSRP?
It does, it falls completely under GSRP, we get ninety-one hundred dollars a student for our GSRP students, just like we get for every single other student. It pays for her salary completely. You know, just to clear that up, because.
No, I get it, but then again, you also said that she's the appoint person on this other thing that don't have anything to do with GSRP.
Correct.
Okay.
Just like, you know, it was just like when Stacy was special ed director and she was principal at King. And when, then she became HR and still special, I mean, it's, we're little. We all have to take on different hats and different roles, like every, not anybody here.
I do not dispute that, not one bit.
Yeah, I mean, all of us have extra jobs.
You have no argument out of me with that, you have no argument out of me with that, but I'm with Bill. At some point in time, we gonna have to look at doing stuff differently.
And I know we don't have a HR person.
We do not, and we don't have a curriculum person either.
But those job descriptions?
Could pick up all that WITA, the assessment, the, all of that, we don't have any of that.
But those job descriptions that are inside of, uh, contracts, they need to be remodified. Instead of a job position and we're gonna add to it like a caveat, they say, alright, this is your job, this is what you're gonna be doing, so we know what we paying for. Cause it seems like every position is an add-on.
Well, it's probably got that caveat and other duties as a sign.
It does.
So that's how you capture all of that.
Yep, you do, and every district does it, not just us, but we do it more than others because we're really short, we're really short-staffed.
Your presentation?
No, I'm, I'm done with my presentation, just listening to what you have to say and what direction do you want me to go in?
Well, the recommendation.
Well, the recommendation, right, is, is to move throughout the year and, um, clean and get the rooms ready at King, or at Seminole and have the final full move in September of twenty-three. Can be modified, it can be, you can do whatever you want with it.
I'm not gonna modify it, Ms. President.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I moved the deceptive recommendation of move King to Seminole, though, or before September twenty twenty-three.
Been moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the King to Seminole move before September of twenty twenty-three. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Member Reno. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? I'd just like, it 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 seems like through this process, there's been two tiers of communication. We heard at the workshop last week and Member Monk was alluding to it earlier about what the folks at King were saying. I heard the Kings, folks at King said, we were already packed. We were told, we're out of here. So they're already packed. So somehow, a message was given to them that they were moving. But the same message was not given to the Seminole staff. Which which is a communication issue, a problem. Because we got two buildings that are involved in one move. One building hears one thing and they're ready begrudgingly or whatever. They were in mindset, body set, actuality, packed to move. Another building, like deer in a headlight, we don't know nothing about it. So that that was a communication failure somewhere throughout this process. That that troubling to me. Just that we were, we were not all on the same page. Some people are on page one, some people on page six, some people that didn't get a book. So they're not on any page. So it's communication breakdown throughout this whole process appears to be. Any additional questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I just know we gotta get this process going. So put the motion on the floor and Superintendent, you, hey, Reese, you figure it out. Okay, that's what you're doing now and my faith is in you. So before September twenty twenty-three.
I have one more comment. So talking about everything, we're not really making a big cost savings. So at what point will you be directing Bill that in this next year, what are we going to be doing with that building? And and let's make that a transition where it doesn't continue to be an added cost to us? So we can have that settled. So it's not another car.
Right. Yeah, Bill's already getting that directive. So what he did at King where he sent the boxes and got all of that organized with Robin, I'm gonna request that Bill and Robin take on that at Seminole. We'll have the classrooms where everyone's gonna go and so.
No, I mean the what we're gonna do with the building as a whole.
Oh, well, we've got some things in the works. So we'll let you know.
Okay.
Mr. Monk.
I pray and hope to God that this process works. I don't believe it will work. But I don't want to be sitting here at a October, November, December, January board meeting and hearing a lot of excuses of why we couldn't do what we set out to do because of whatever circumstances. I don't want to hear it, me personally.
If this motion carries, there should be one one message communicated from this day forward.
It should be.
That by September of twenty twenty-three, if this motion passes, move. You gotta be ready to move. You gotta participate in it and move because that's 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 what the motion states. Before September twenty twenty-three, this King will be absorbed into Seminole. And so that should be the only line of communication that that goes out. Now, the hows, how to get to it, that's out of our lane.
We ain't got nothing to do with that.
That's out of our lane. Our lane is determine the what. And if the board determines the what is to by September of twenty-three, King will be moved, merged into Seminole, that's the what. Yeah, I agree with you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
No. Motion carries. Item six B, staffing update. Madam Superintendent.
So this is just a quick update. We're looking at hiring right now. We have two teachers at King that need, well, two positions at King that need to be hired, the nurse and a POHI teacher. We have thirteen teachers at Seminole that need to be hired. Three of those are special ed teachers. We have four teachers, five teachers actually, at Secondary, four teachers and one resource room teacher. So that looks at twenty staff that need to be hired. We are also interviewing for the.
You said twenty?
Twenty.
At last week, I think you said twenty-three. Have we hired somebody?
We've hired, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we have an English teacher that we hired and someone else. And then we're also gonna be interviewing for the Seminole principal position next week.
Do we have a lot of strong candidates for that principal position?
It's been a struggle.
Sound like we need someone with an iron fist. No, I'm just saying. I hope we got some good candidates.
Is is that position posted with a deadline or is it posted open until fail? Because if you don't have.
Right, we're gonna re, actually, we're probably gonna repost.
You know, you have the latitude of continuing to keep it open until you find somebody.
I will make a comment, you know. Us three, us three have been at this this position before. So I'm gonna make the comment that I made the last two, three times. Seminole has and always have housed the majority of our students. And based on what we heard tonight and citizen comment, that's not a one-off. We need to hire a principal who does not, and let me repeat, does not require on-the-job training. They have to be strong. They have to be well organized, and I'll leave it up to you. I'm not gonna get in there. I'm gonna stay in my lane. I'm trying to tell you. We have to hire a strong leader who will lead not only the staff, but the students and custodials and everybody pertaining in that building structure. You gotta hire a leader and not someone like we hired this past time, which was on-the-job training and never was a building person.
Continue with your update. Is that it?
That's it.
Because it's not an action item, right?
It's not an action item. It was just an FYI. I probably should have gone.
Any any questions, other superintendent regarding the staffing update?
How realistically are we gonna fill these positions? I know you, I know you hoping. I I get that. Realistically, where we at as far as these positions? We at twenty. That's all, that's a, that's a lot of bodies.
Yes, it is.
That's a tremendous amount of bodies.
I think it was twenty-three last Thursday, so we're starting.
Three to the good, twenty more to go.
Three to the good, yes, sir.
So how realistic is this?
I'll keep you posted. We have, we'll have some information when we have our closed session on negotiations.
And I ask this, and I ask that question to enter to this question. We look up, it's mid-August and we're still down twenty positions. We gonna need to make a decision at this table whether we going, what direction we gonna take as far as our buildings. So that's gonna open up a whole another can of worms. But we can't wait till the eleventh hour. I'm just, y'all, we working on short timeframes here. We can't wait. I mean, to me, if we ain't got these positions filled by mid-July, we need to start looking at what we gonna do in the fall. I'm just saying.
Any additional comments? Item six C, renewal of non-union contracts. There's two contracts, I understand, and they'll be voted on separate independently.
Okay, let's start with Tom Hannah. Let's start with the accountability officer. And so our accountability officer is a key member of the staff here at Secondary. Very key member. There were twenty-seven hundred log entries between September and the middle of May. Discipline referrals and log entries. And this person is a key person in terms of, I want to say, probably ninety-five percent of that. He's a community member and he knows the community. He knows the kids, he knows the parents, and that goes a long way when it comes to some of the issues that happen here at Secondary. So my recommendation is that his contract is renewed.
Recommendation from the superintendent is to renew the contract of the accountability officer. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second by Member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Madam Superintendent.
The other, the next position is a position, this person started in February, so it was it was a late hire. This is the student community liaison. This is a position that's funded through Essar Two. Funded through Essar Two, so this person has been with us, like I said, since probably mid-February. She's done some social and emotional learning, mental health initiatives with the kids. Some, she's created some school and community resources. And she's worked with some of our chronically students with chronic attendance issues and students with failures, a lot of failures in their classes. So my recommendation and the recommendation of Mr. Duncan is to renew this contract.
Recommendation is to renew the contract of the student community liaison. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation.
So moved.
Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Second Member Collins. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk.
Okay, so unbeknownst to this board, when this person was first brought on, and I had a conversation with you when I heard we hired a community liaison person. And I said to the superintendent, we've been down that road before. So, you know, and I'm, I get it, it went through the personnel committee, so I'm looking at this readout of what she looks to do and what she has done. So we'll just 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 start in the beginning, you know, the first one. Partnering with local therapy practices. Partnering with CARES in Southeast Michigan to create the health. That is exactly what our counselor and our social worker do right now. Let's go to school and community resources. Partnering with Oakland University to bring counseling interns. That's what our counselor does right now. Creating partnership with Macomb County College. That's what our counselor does right now. Creating partnership with local businesses to support students through internships, externships, donations, and sponsorships. That's kind of what our counselor, social worker does right now. Creating hysterical black colleges and universities tool for sophomores and juniors. We have been doing that. Earl, how long we been doing it? How long we been involved with that? That's that's.
Couple twenty, couple decades.
Yeah, we, I mean, that's nothing new. And then I'm looking at the students, so, and I'm not gonna stay to stay and say the student's name. I numbered them. So reading through these stu, reading through these eleven students that she was assigned, she was assigned eleven students. We have a counselor who's responsible for the students in the high school. We have a social worker who's, we have two social workers who's responsible for the students here in the secondary complex. And we got another social worker over at elementary. And I'm looking at the success of the students that she's seen, and I can only count student one and student eleven. And there's like three, four students. There was no improvement at all. So what the person that we bring on, we have humor, I mean, we have a we have Ms. Hannah, Pete Trauma, counselor, Ms. Monk, I forgot our social worker name over at Seminole.
Ms. Lutz.
Ms. Lutz. Everything that's on this paper is handled by all of those people. So we just hired somebody who is literally doubling what we already got somebody to do. And if my understanding, we're paying her, we're, she gets benefits.
Yes, she does.
So her contract is what, personnel, what is it, ninety thousand? That's what I, Bill, what's her con, what is her whole total contract?
I would have to look it up, sir.
With, yeah, I I always, and I've done this before, I look at contracts with benefits, not just the pay, with benefits.
Total compensation.
Total compensation. You talking about ninety thousand dollars, I may be a little bit short off, plus or minus, of doing the same things that we have people on our staff doing already. And we did, we did this before and it didn't work. So why are we doing it again? I'm not understanding. What she, what's on this paper, you know? We have people on staff that's doing this already. So why do we hire somebody to do something that somebody's already doing?
So part of the reason that this position was created was back to, remember when we did those Essar Three meetings and we had those community forum pieces, and this was one of the initiatives that came out loud and clear from that group of people? So this is why, because it was part of our Essar Three grant and we have to submit that information on our meetings that we've had with our meaningful partners, that this position was created because of those meetings.
Okay, I'm not, not, you said a group of, what happened?
We had it here. We had a bunch of meetings here with people to talk about our Essar Three money. Remember, we had people wanting the pool fix, we had people wanting.
Oh, that one meeting that we had?
Yeah, and but we've, we had others as well. But, yeah, we had one big meeting here and then we had others with different stakeholders.
This position is a waste of money that can be allocated towards our students in other fashions. Why hire one person that we have, I counted six people on staff, that can take care of everything that's on the ship? I just, I'm being realistic, I'm being simplistic. I mean, I I don't see it.
We were actually looking for another social worker, but there are, I think there's twenty-eight social worker openings in Macomb County right now, so.
Now, these, this list here, are these just things she's accomplished in the short time she's been here? And do you have other things set for her for the upcoming school year that you, like a set of goals for her?
That would be, she's secondary, so she works here with Kirk, so that would be, to be honest, a Kirk question, but he does have some plans for her for the next school year, things that he wants to push her on and doing more.
Well, I mean, to pick back off.
And she works all year, so she's, works all summer.
Okay, but pick it back off what Jamie said, is this stuff that she will be doing or is this stuff that she has done?
This information that you have right here is information that I got from her. I need to send in compliance documents.
So we don't know, okay, that's what I'm getting at. So we don't know. So we don't know, okay, that's what I'm getting at, so we don't know if, if she's done this or not. This is just something she put down, saying, hey, yeah, this is what I'm looking to do. So she gave you something to say, yeah, this is what I'm doing. I don't, I mean, where's the job description at? Where's her job description? I, I may be wrong, but I think I'm not, if we're paying somebody benefits, they need a job description.
That's right here.
I don't see that. You got that, but I don't get it. I mean, y'all have a job description?
No, I didn't provide that for all of you, I can get that for you.
All right. I mean, it's, you know, I, I put on here, so I put on here, partnership with CARES of Southeastern Michigan, you know. How many students, how many students attended this, if she put this fair on, how many students attended? That's, that's one question. Create hysterical block colleges. What tour did they do? What colleges did they go to? If that's what she's saying that she did. I mean, did they go to FIS, did they go to Alabama State? Did they go to FAMU? Did they go to, uh, um, which ones? I mean, what happened? You know, um, it's, oh, I don't know. We've been there, done that before. It didn't work then, it's not working now. Let's take that money, let's put that money towards our kids.
Madam Superintendent. You said this position was, or materialized from a S R community meeting.
Correct.
Is this position a want or a need? Because I say that because, um, sound like frog going Lego when I say that. But, uh, the reason I ask that question is, um, I, I, I see the need for a guidance counselor or a social worker, or something like that. I don't know, I know our counselor got the hands for what the, what the children be dealing with. The thing she's doing is a duplicate of what is already in process. Unless she took something from them and just wrote it on a piece of paper, I don't know. Uh, I can't tell you she has, have done anything or didn't do anything. But I do know what people have done in the past in this district. If this was materialized because of a want, but not a need, and there's really nothing in stone of what she's gonna be doing, then it's questionable. So that's my question, is this a want or is this a need?
I think it's, it's probably a little bit of both. I think the, the need is definitely for a social worker. Absolutely, um, there just aren't, I guess that there's, there's openings everywhere for social workers.
So is this position more of a guidance counselor?
I, I believe this position is, to be honest, it's more of a social worker kind of position. She's meeting with kids, she meets with them individually, she calls parents, she-
But she's not a social worker, let's make that clear.
She is not.
She is not a licensed M S W.
Right.
What are, what are her-
My wife is a M S, licensed M S W. She is not a licensed M S W.
Jamie, I don't know, I don't have that here in front of me.
Can we table this to July so we can know what, more about her, what her qualifications are, what Kirk's plan for her position is?
Okay, so one of the things I would like to check on then, if we table this until July, does that mean her contract automatically rolls over and we have a thirty-day window if we lay her off? You know what I'm saying? So I, I don't believe her contract automatically rolls over, but again, I, we would have to get some legal advice on that.
Do you have the contract right there?
I do. But it's not-
It's not in there?
No.
Should be.
Well.
It's administrative, she should be, she, that contract should be written up as an administrative contract.
It's a non-administrative contract of employment. We have a compensation, I have the layoff.
When does the contract expire?
The contract expires on, it began, the contract begins July first, twenty-twenty-two, this next contract, and ends on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three.
I, I believe that we're gonna have to have a special meeting before the end of this month. Uh, and if there's, you mentioned table, and if this is table, this is something that could be tabled until the next meeting. Because I, I, I believe, um, based on what we hear in the closed session, that we're gonna have to take action, uh, but not tonight. So I believe that we will, we will need a special meeting prior to the end of June.
Yep. So Jamie, what exactly do you need? Do you want, um-
What her qualifications are for the position, um, how Kirk intends to utilize her, and I'd, I'd like to know how he sees that she'll benefit our kids.
Okay. Okay, I can keep that.
So right now, the motion, current motion on the floor, moved by Member Reno, seconded by Member Collins, was to renew the contract. That's the motion that's on the floor now. You wanna, um, that-
Can we amend the motion?
You can sub, have a substitute motion, and then add whatever you, whatever, what substitute motion you'd like to request.
To table.
Put it upon the motion, move it, move to table.
So I make a motion to table.
It's been moved by Member Collins to table the position of the community liaison, student community liaison. They're second.
Yeah.
Seconded, Member Reno. To table, discussion to the next meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Uh, Ms. President, since the two people that made the second motion to table are the same exact two people in opposite order that did the original motion, do we still go back to the last motion?
It's a substitute motion, it's a whole different motion.
Yeah. That means no.
That means they don't, you know, anybody could do it. The same two could do it in the same order, because it's a different motion.
So we don't have to revisit the other one, we just leave it alone at this point?
If, if, if this one passes, then that, that's the motion of the day. Because you do them in reverse order. The motion to approve the contract was moved second. The motion to table the consideration of renewing the contract was a second motion, substitute motion, when you move it out backwards, if you approved the substitute motion, then there's no need to go back and approve the motion to approve the contract, because it was the motion to, to, uh, to, uh, table, supers, will be the motion that passed.
Okay, we'll need to revisit the first one.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, we're cleared.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is to table, uh, the decision on the community lia, student community liaison position until our next meeting. Hearing has seen none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
No.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Scheritman?
Yes, motion carries. Item seven, business committee. A, budgets, A one, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three general fund budget. Madam Superintendent.
I will defer to Mr. Melchey.
Yes, you have the budget in front of you in your packet. It's the same that was discussed at the, uh, at the budget hearing this evening with revenues of eighteen million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-five dollars. Budget expenditures of fifteen million, five hundred fifty-two thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars for a projected surplus of two million, nine hundred twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. Add that to a beginning fund balance projected of three million, five hundred seventy-three thousand, forty-two dollars with a projected ending fund balance of six million, five hundred two thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars, which represents forty-one point eight one percent of operating expenditures.
Chair would entertain a motion regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three projected general fund budget.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded, Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Are we, um, we moving this as a whole, right, A, one, three, five?
No, no, I'm-
We gotta do it individual?
I'm, I'm doing them individually, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing has seen none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Scheritman?
Yes, motion carries. Item two.
Yes, um, you have in your packet the proposed food service fund, twenty-two, twenty-three budget with, uh, projected revenues of six hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars. Expenditures of six hundred thirty-five thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars for a projected surplus of eight thousand, two hundred thirty dollars. Beginning fund balance projected at a hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars. And ending fund balance, a hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred fourteen dollars for a twenty percent fund balance of operating expenditures. You'll notice on your, um, document that you have in front of you, the budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two approved budget is the same as the twenty-two, twenty-three. We will be bringing you, there's so many unknowns in terms of reimbursement rate and, um, cost increases. We will be bringing you probably multiple revised budgets as we go through the twenty-two, twenty-three year to make sure that we're picking up on food cost increases and those types of things. And we, since the twenty-one, twenty-two approved budget, which you'll approve actually in a minute, is the, um, right, what our operations look like for the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two year. We thought that was a good place to start, as I worked with the director and the regional manager from S F V for the budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three year.
Any questions? Chair would entertain a motion for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three food service fund budget.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Member Reno. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor?
I have one question. Bill, um, when the surplus, I know it came out that some of the things that we may possibly do is maybe, you know, kinda spruce up the cafeteria a little bit. Is, are we able to move any of those, um, funds that are to the positive over to maybe do some things? I know, I mean, very little, you know, just to kinda make it a little more pleasant place to eat for the, for the kids, for students.
Any part of the building that is exclusively used for the food service operations, you could use the fund balance from that to pay for those improvements. But if it's split, like cafeteria might be used for foods, you know, for lunch and breakfast, but it's also used for, you know, after-school meetings or that kind of thing. If it is, then I have to allocate it between estimated usage. Um, but in our, this case, most of that probably could be. I know one of the one things that they really wanted to do, and have been talking about, is the snack, the, the a la carte or snack bar area, getting that, you know, getting the sink put back in and that type of thing. I've been holding off, just waiting to see if we couldn't see a little improvement in the program. I think we're starting to see that, we've got the breakfast bar going, and some portable snack bar going. So absolutely, yes, we can, and I'll work with the, uh, our food service director and the regional manager to, to talk to them about what they need in that.
Yeah, I was kinda-
Along with equipment, too.
Yeah, I was kinda thinking of, and it's, I mean, I thought about this actually a couple of meetings ago, you know, maybe put in some booths, maybe two, three booths, and that can be like in a center program for-
Yep.
Kids coming to school on time, good grades. You know, that can be like a reserve booth for them to sit in doing, I don't know, you know, something, make it, you know, more pleasant and incentive for the kids, so, yeah.
Yep.
I have periodic meetings with the regional manager and our director manager, so I will bring those things.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Scheritman?
Yes, motion carries.
The next budget you have in your packet is what's called the student and school activity fund budget for the twenty-two, twenty-three year. This is, I think, the third year where we've actually had to approve a budget for these. What this is, is really what's commonly referred to as internal accounts or student activity accounts. And we have to just project how much we're gonna bring in and how much we're gonna pay out of that. In most years, those things are in and outs usually match each other, come close to matching each other. You know, a lot of fundraising, that type of thing, so that's the budget that you have in front of you. As I prepared this, which would be my first time doing it for this district, I noticed that we have a large balance, five hundred eleven thousand dollars is sitting in there. And I started asking the accounting staff as to what's in there. Some of it's some scholarships that were, you know, established funds years and years and years ago, and so we're really gonna, over the next year to months, few months, talk to the finance committee about what's in there and see if we shouldn't be trying-
Did I hear you correctly, five, half a million?
Yeah.
It's just sitting in there.
Yeah, but it's all earmarked, it's, it's like for, yes, it is. That's what's on the books from the audit of last year.
Oh, my God. Wow.
That beginning fund balance-
Half a million dollars is sitting in there.
And it's, it's all those types of things where we have money that was raised or given for a particular purpose, and it has earmarked for that particular purpose. But there are some guidelines about if, if the purpose isn't, you know, say the activity is no longer going or those types of things, what can be done with that money? And that's just a lot to just be sitting there, so I think we will, I will dive into it more over the next few months and figure out what it is and what, why we have it and what the intended purpose was.
Okay.
So we either need to use it for the purpose, or we need to, you know, do something.
I know Mrs. Potter, when she was here, was looking into that, too. There might be something in your office that has something to do with that. I'll look through some of my files that I have from her. Because I do know she was looking into that, too.
That's a larger balance than I see in any school district I've worked in, so it's, it's, it's a larger one.
I, I have a question. The student activity and athletic fund, the new legislature says it has to be broken down by activity. Do we have this broken down by activity?
Every account has its own account number and ins and outs. So let's, I'm just gonna use an example, say it's, I'll just use one, the football team has, does fundraising. There's an account that says football, and when they raise money, it goes into that, and when they spend money, it goes out of that. So every account, every pocket of money has in its own fund, it's its own fund on our books.
I understand that, but does the new legislature say it has to be presented differently in the budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
Isn't that what was presented to us a few months back?
We'll have to, Bill, would you look into that?
Yes, I will, yeah.
I do know that there was some rule change.
There are, it may be what you're talking, there's public trust funds where we hold the money, not like a student activity account, but it's called a public trust fund, and those, there is, we don't have any of those, but there is a requirement to record those differently. So maybe that's what you're thinking about, but I'll look into it.
No, there was a big rule change specific to student activity and athletic budget.
And it's in Palace, it was in Palace that we heard about it. Yeah, I think so.
Okay, yeah, I'll look into it, for sure.
Yep.
Our athletic program is all recorded as part of the general fund. Has been for years, it's had been, so, yeah, I'll look into it.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that question, because that's part of the general fund.
Yes. Not that teams don't raise money, you know, for things that the general fund doesn't pay for in a lot of districts, and I'm sure here we do, too, but it, it's not a large portion of that money that's there.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing has seen none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Scheritman, I apologize, I did not, uh-
It was moved, where, where are we on the student?
Yes, student fund.
Okay, Monk, Monk, we don't have a motion yet. You've heard the presentation.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Seconded, Member Collins. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none. Call a roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Scheritman?
Yes, motion carries. Forward.
Yes, next budget you have in front of you is the general fund, twenty-one, twenty-two final revised budget. This has, um, budgeted revenues of nineteen thou, or nineteen million, nine hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars. Budgeted expenditures of sixteen million, six hundred eighty-two thousand, four dollars for a projected surplus of three million, two hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred forty-two dollars. That is an increase of almost nine hundred thousand dollars over the original budget that was presented to you. Some of that is me being new to the district and, and, and learning about the district now that I've had some months under my belt to get more familiar with the district. The other part of those- The other part of those additional adding to fund balance is how many positions we had that were not filled during the year. People leaving mid-year, having to fill with substitutes that weren't paid the full wage, weren't paid the full benefits, all that type of thing. So that's part of it also. This then would end up with a projected fund balance at the end of the current year of four million five hundred and six thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Heard the recommendation, chair would entertain a motion.
So move.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none, call roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Sunil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Drick?
Yes, motion carries. Item five.
Final budget, the food service fund revised budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Projected revenue six hundred and forty-four thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Projected expenditures six hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars for a projected surplus of eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Bringing the projected fund balance to a hundred and nineteen thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars, which is eighteen point seven seven percent of budgeted expenditures. Those, those numbers are down both on the revenue and the expense side from what the original budget that was presented was. I don't know how the original numbers were presented, projected, because I was not involved in developing that first budget, but I think there was hopes that participation might be higher than it was, which we are working on. We've got, did a survey, we, you know, got them looking at it, and I continue to ask them the questions about what they're doing, about trying to improve participation, and also, we had a survey that I shared with the finance committee, and I can share it with everybody else if I haven't already, where they did a survey of students and they have some reasons why, things that they could improve upon and, and that the students saw, which, you know, some of it was choices was a big thing, how many choices, and the meal, the food quality was another one, so we're continuing to work on those things, too. But the program is operating in the black, which is a good thing. We're not taking any general fund monies now to operate the food service program.
The food has been looking a lot better. I bet, you know, I usually wander into the lunchroom, either for middle school or high school, just to see what's happening. And it does look a lot better, things look good.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the twenty-two-one, twenty-two food service fund revised budget.
So move.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second, member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Students complaining about choices. Choices? They got several choices, we had two choices.
See what they have or don't.
The make-believe meat or the food line. Two choices, you couldn't even get a Twinkie. And they complain about choices.
You still can't get a Twinkie.
They got, they got Italian, they got Mexican, they got this, they got that, okay, anyway. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
I will say that Stephanie and I did pop in for lunch one day, and, well, I, I did once, I don't know if Stephanie's been more, but that was my first thing that I saw was how many choices they had. But I will also say the ladies in there are working really hard and they are phenomenal, and they interact with those kids so well, so.
Ms. Carolyn, I think, is everybody's mom and grandma.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns for the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none, call roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Sunil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Drick?
Yes, motion carries. B.
One thing on budgets before we move to the next thing, just real quick, comment by me, I stand corrected, superintendent's absolutely correct. It's GSRP and general fund funded for the principal position at
Yeah.
King, and it's eighty-twenty is the split, so I was wrong in saying it was pohai.
And what's the, and what's the total, what's the total compensation?
A hundred and twenty thousand.
Okay. Eighty-twenty split?
So not to rehash old things, but I just, when I'm wrong, I admit I'm wrong, and I was wrong. So next one is the twenty-two tax rate request form. This is the form that you have to approve every year, and what this does is us telling the townships or the counties or the cities that are our taxing jurisdiction what millage levy we want to levy for the upcoming year. So this is for the two thousand twenty-two year, which we levy in July, a hundred percent summer tax levy. In the first line, remember in the budget reason, or the budget hearing presentation, I said that eighteen point, or sorry, seventeen point eight seven zero one mils on non-Homestead property, that's what's mentioned on here. The only other tax levy we levy is for retiring debt or paying off the bonds from previous bond issues. And we levy eleven point eight mils on that, again, a hundred percent in the summer. The good news is, we are now, I don't know how many of you are aware or know about school bond loan fund, but we are now in a position where we're bringing in enough taxes to pay off the bonds plus pay the state back for additional borrowing we did when, we had years when we couldn't pay off the bonds. So that's a good thing, it means we're heading in the right direction and, and we're starting to pay down on our bonds. Our mandatory repayment date, it appears we're going to be able to shorten that by a few years, which is a good thing. So that means bonds will be retired sooner than what we originally had thought they would be, which gets the district out of debt that much sooner as it relates to bonds. So that's a good thing. So each year you need to approve this, so it's on the table for, for approval.
Chair would entertain a motion relative to the approval of the twenty-two tax rate request form of non-Homestead of seventeen point eight seven zero one mil.
So move.
Moved by member Monk.
Support.
Second member Reno, that's a Monk and Reno showed it down.
Can you just make sure you say the eleven point eight mils for debt retirement?
Oh, sorry, yes, and also eleven point, I got it written down there.
Okay, sorry.
And eleven point eight mils for debt retirement.
Yep.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Yes, got a comment.
Yes, sir.
I'm glad to see that we are paying down this bond for our, for our community. That's something that we started, I think, what, we refinanced.
We refinanced about three or four years ago.
About three, four years ago, so, you know, I'm glad to see that we didn't kick that can down the road, we got that going, so that's paying out for our citizens. So it's always nice that, you know, whenever we can, we save our citizens of this community some money on their taxes, so.
Additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing is seeing none, call roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Sunil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Drick?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight, under the information item, the business committee financial report, any questions regarding the financial report? Item nine, curriculum and personnel committee, A, student achievement report.
This is a report that actually the curriculum and personnel committee did not have because we didn't have the test scores. I didn't get the scores back until Monday. This is a report that by law needs to be presented to the district before the last day of the school year, which is June thirtieth. So here's our goal progress report. Can I move back so you can see it? You have the copies, all right? So let's, we can just go through it together, too. So the, these were our educational goals for our year end. Goal one was to increase our show growth in ELA in grades K actually through twelve. And our goal two was to show goal, to show growth in mathematics in grades kindergarten through second grade. So the first piece is our reading achievement. I like the heart of the book, I'm a big reader. The next slide you'll see, if we're back up here, if we can get to slide, I should number these, four, I believe. Next slide, okay, so this, these are the norms based on twenty-twenty, the norms have changed, but putting this together, they're, they're pretty similar. So we'll just move on from that. So you'll take a look, the next slide shows our spring reading and WEA average and our average RIT score, so you'll see. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, need to do that? Okay, so what you're going to see here is, for example, you'll see the kindergarten class at the far left. In the fall, they were at a one thirty-seven RIT, and in the spring, they moved up to a one forty-five.
Explain what a RIT is.
The RIT is the, it's the average score that the students receive. So they, the, an average RIT score would be what do you want a student to achieve in kindergarten? They have to achieve at a certain rate, a certain RIT score. In twelfth grade, they've got a different RIT score, it all, it increases each time. And I should have had, I, I know RIT stands for something, but.
Yeah, that's one of my questions, what does RIT stand for?
Yeah, I'll get it, I'll get it for you. I just can't remember at the moment. I will get that for you, but anyways, so these are our scores in comparison throughout the year in reading. You can see that when you look at the four, at, in the fall, those are the ones in orange, and the spring testing, which was done and just completed at the end of May is in blue. So we had some growth and we had some drops. The next slide shows gender, oh, economically disadvantaged, sorry, turn to page with that. So these are economically disadvantaged students, so if you take a look at, you can see Seminole, middle school and high school comparing the number of economically disadvantaged students to the non-economically disadvantaged students. And then you can look at their RIT scores or their average scores, their average achievement scores per school.
Do we have?
So you can see growth across the board.
When you look at the sixth and seventh grade, do we have any reason or understanding of why the scores dropped in the spring from the fall? They didn't drop drastically, but it's still a drop.
Yep, it is still a drop. That is something that the scores are no longer embargoed, that we'll be working with our staff as we all come back. I do know that across Macomb County, there was a drop in most of the middle schools across Macomb County this year. There's not a lot of reasons or ideas why. The kids did miss about eighteen months of regular school, so they were just coming back from that. But it was interesting that their scores were a little bit higher in the fall than they were in the spring. What it shows to me is there wasn't a lot of growth.
Same thing in the ninth grade.
Correct. So the, the next slide is our English language learners, we have very few. Like you can see on here, we have twenty-six. So these are the students that come in and they speak a language other than English at home or their first language when they were children was a language other than English. So you can take a look at the number of students and then you can look at their RIT scores, so the, in the fall and in the spring. Where the students that are non-ELL, you don't see the fall and the spring of the ELL students because there's so few of them. Is that why we missed that, Macomb?
Um, you had no, no data with what you gave me confused on in the fall or the spring.
All right. So the next up group is gender. Yeah, we just have so few ELL, okay. So this is comparing the, our male and our female students and their RIT scores and their average reading scores. So again, at Seminole, we have more males than females. In the middle school, we have more females than males, just by a couple, and in the high school, we have more males than females. And then you can take a look at their scores. Usually you'll see a bigger difference in math between the males and the females, unfortunately.
Usually, usually you'll see more females than males, but
In reading.
Yeah, what's, what's the, what's the change, what's?
In the student count.
Yeah.
There's more females in the world than there are males.
Right.
Interesting, isn't it, interesting demographic here? But our kids are pretty equal in terms of their achievement. The males and the females are achieving at an equal rate. The next slide is race and ethnicity. So we have our African-American students, the next one, the AIAN students are American Indians or Alaskan natives. So we have one student at Seminole and one student at the high school. But again, we don't report their scores because if there'd be only one student, they could be identified, so you're not going to see their scores. But you can look at the average reading RIT, and actually, we're all pretty much together. Seminole, middle school and high school. The next up group is special education. So you can look at our difference of our special education students with our gen ed students. We have eighty-six special education students, for example, at Seminole, we have two hundred and sixty-six non-special education students. So if you look at the reading average RIT for our special ed students and our non-special ed students, again, our scores are pretty close, they're pretty similar. Mode of instruction, another piece of information that we have to report to the state, everybody was fully in person except for, actually, we had one student from at Seminole that was completely remote. So next slide. The reflections and next steps will take place with the administrators this summer and with our teachers as we come back to the new school year. So goal two is mathematics achievement, and we're looking again at the NWEA math girl scores for students in grades K, actually, students in grades K through twelve or twelve or eleven. The mathematics student achievement norms, next page. You can see the spring score, so what you're looking at is the average RIT score, one fifty-seven point eleven for kindergarten. That's the score that you want your kids to read, to reach, that's the average math score. The twelfth grader should be at a two thirty-four point one nine. If you take a look at those scores, you can see the two thirty, two thirty-two, two thirty-four, and so on. As the, as the kids get older, the material gets harder, and it's, and the growth piece isn't quite as great as it is from a kindergartner. Think about, you know, little kids where they're just learning to read and they start growing and learning. It, it's a lot easier to make a larger growth, as you go farther up, it's not expected to have big, huge growth. Unless you start out really well. So these are our NWEA average RIT scores in mathematics by grade level. You can see the fall scores and then you can see the winter scores. And if you look at our mathematics scores, you can see that we showed growth across the board. There weren't any dips whatsoever. Economically disadvantaged students. You can take a look and see our economically disadvantaged compared to our non-economically disadvantaged students in looking at their scores, again, our scores are pretty close, there's not a huge gap between the scores of our economically disadvantaged and our non-economically disadvantaged students. English language learners, same thing, again, there's very few of them. And most of our English language learners are Hispanic. Gender, again, we're looking at math scores. So you can see that the females grew from the fall to the spring, and so did the males. So all of our scores grew and our scores, our kids were pretty equal, especially at Seminole, where the scores were similar. Race and ethnicity, again. Similar scores, like we're close. Special education, not a huge difference between our special education scores and our non-special education scores. Especially when you look at the growth, when the special education students at Seminole, for example, went from one fifty-six to one sixty-seven. That's pretty significant for elementary school students in mathematics, these are special ed kids. Our non-special ed kids went from one sixty-six to one seventy-six, so they grade, they gained ten points and the others gained a lot. So the growths are similar. Mode of instruction, again, all in person. And these are things that we will, again, be digging into at our back to school with our teachers when we do our PD, when we introduce all of our new teachers to our kids and to their scores, and we talk about what's going on and what's happening within the classrooms and the administrators. the classrooms and the administrators. We'll be working together on a plan with the teachers. This is a big piece of what our district school improvement team will be doing and working on for the next full year. Any questions? Any questions? You have all of this information in your packets. If you have any questions or you want to use this for anything, um, please feel free.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Item ten, superintendent's comments.
So, um, this week on Monday and Tuesday, we had our first focus, um, culture and climate focus group meeting. We had about twenty, some twenty-four staff attended on Monday afternoon, and only three came Tuesday morning, and then we had administrators as well. But that's a pretty good turnout when you think that we only have, we have a small staff and it was the first two days after, um, after the end of the school year. We had it facilitated by Barbara Van Sweden. She was the one that, she was one of our facilitators when we did our board retreat. She did a great, a great job, um, with them. We had secondary staff here, we had Seminole staff, we had King staff, we had food service here, secretarial, um, and we had some custodians as well. So we tried to get, we tried to get some information from just about everybody. The administrators attended yesterday afternoon. We had a lot of great feedback and we're compiling it right now. So we had, um, five questions that we asked the staff to reflect on and to write up. The first one question was what's going well and how can we make it better? The next one was what is a priority for our district? Question three is what might we begin doing? Question four is what keeps you here? And question five is what do you envision for our district next year? And I have, I was gonna say, Paul has been comply, compiling the data and he has the first group done, and of course, it's not under my fingertips right here. Um, anyways, he has the first one done, but we'll send a, a full report to all of you and this will be another piece that the administrators will be doing in our DTN meetings and that we'll be using in our district improvement team meetings as well. We had them write up what all their ideas were, so we gave them some reflection time. They all had posted notes, they had the questions up on, um, chart paper. Then they went and they posted all of that, and then we did kind of a gallery walk where the, where the participants all had dots where they voted on what things that they saw that they thought was the most important. So when we're filling that in, we, um, as we filled that out, we have that listed in order of importance. So, I know.
You said, you guys did a survey?
I'm sorry, what?
You said you did a survey?
We did a focus group.
Oh, a focus group?
Focus group, yep.
What type of participation did we get out of the focus group?
So we had, um, twenty-four staff members attending Monday afternoon. We had only three that came Tuesday morning and we had our administrators that came Tuesday afternoon. So we had, uh, looks like about thirty that came, which isn't bad during the day, the first two days after the last day of school. So we'll be planning on having some more.
So this focus group, what this, all the staff was invited to this?
Yes, they were.
And only twenty? You said showed up the first day?
Thirty, um, twenty-four showed up the first day.
Twenty-four showed up the first day, and how many staff we have? What's the number, how many staff we got?
I don't know, Jason. We have fifty-six teachers.
So you need at least seventy-five percent to show up to have an accurate reading.
You know what? What we ask for is just people's opinions and we're gonna get that together and we're gonna talk.
Definitely on that, yeah.
And I think the people that came are the people that care.
Okay.
So you, alright, hold on. I'm confused by that statement. So are you saying the people that came are the people that care?
No.
Are you saying that, and that's why I'm, I'm, no, I just wanna make sure you're not saying that the people that didn't come...
No.
Didn't care?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that, that the people that came, many of them are real involved, they're real involved in our schools, they, they want to be heard. There were several people that couldn't come and that sent their regrets, they were already leaving on vacation and they wish they could be part of it. We'll be offering more focus groups as well throughout the year.
I remember three, four, or five board meetings ago, we talked about a survey. And I remember Ms. Christie saying, if you get the survey, I will get the members to fill it out.
Membership?
I remember that being said.
Yep.
So has that been done? Is that gonna be done? Or did this focus group take over from that survey that was discussed? Because you were gonna get with the sta, with the staff and, you know, come up with a, you know, with questions and stuff for the survey. So my question is, did the survey give, give rise and fall away by, aside? And this focus group came as an outgrowth rather than a survey?
No, the, the focus group isn't an outgrowth instead of the survey. Uh, we have been working on the survey, I've been working with Sarah Scott. We created and rejected probably six of them by now. So, um, and we went through your company, we went to that company you suggested as well, but they don't do surveys for schools, so it made it more difficult. So we, um, do work with Sarah Scott and Swift and she is helping to create a survey. It's, it's just not done.
Helping me understand, is it that hard to create a survey?
You know, you wanna be, you wanna be careful what kinds of questions that you ask, you wanna get to the heart of...
Okay, go, go in, I mean, explain it. I'm not, I'm, I kinda, I've been part of surveys and developing surveys, so, I mean, the whole purpose behind, the whole purpose behind the survey is to get the raw data.
Right.
Raw data where people tell the truth. You want people to tell the truth. You don't wanna put a question in that kinda leads them down the road to, you know, you want them to, hey, how you feeling? How do you feel about this? What do you think about that? You know what I'm saying? What's your, you know, you want the raw, unadulterated, raw data so we can really dig into what the temperature is in this district. And I, and I agree with Earl, that's, you know, and it's kinda like we talk about stuff, but then we give direction and here we are, two, three months later, and we're still like, that's why I asked, is this a survey? I thought it was a survey you was talking about, but it's a focus group. That's why I said, is this a survey? Cause I think, I'm looking for a survey. So...
It's not here, it's not done.
Yeah, that's, that's troubling. We'll, we'll never get to the point where it's that we get feedback from our employees to make us better as a district. We need that feedback. That's part of us, that's part of our growth. We need that feedback. Good, bad, or indifferent, we need it.
Was Enargage able, able to give you any suggestions to other organizations that can put together a survey?
No, we do have a survey from Swift. We gave it last year, we didn't have very good participation. I can get you the data from that one and we can redo a survey like that. I can show you what that is, I have it in my office.
What happened with the idea of the administration, whether it's the building administrator, you sitting down with some, members of the staff and creating a doc, creating a survey? You don't need a professional to, to create a survey because we know what kinda questions we wanna know. Well, we, uh, this can be developed in-house.
Okay.
I, I don't believe you need to go out for no professional survey company to do this. Um, you, you've got staff that are, that are willing to give their input on stuff. We got administration, let's get together and come up with, come up with something.
Okay.
We don't have to go out there and get these professionals to do that. We, we're professional, I think, we should be professional enough to come up with our own survey.
Alright. I'll have something for you, um...
Take those questions and put them on the survey monkey and get it out to the people.
Well, maybe I can even start with the five questions that we have. What's going well? How can we make it better? What's a priority for our district? What might we begin doing?
We need to do something, we need to do it quick.
Okay. Alright, I wasn't quite done, um...
No problem.
So, we're meeting with the administrator, we will be meeting with the administrators to process the information that we have from this group, which is a lot of information. Uh, we're also beginning to interview for the Seminole principal next week. We have teachers, staff, parents, and Ms. Michaelwitz will be on the committee. Um, I'd also like to thank all of our staff for the successful end of the school year. There were some interesting moments this year, but we all worked together and we got through it. So that's great. Um, I also would like to wish our graduates a bright future and happy fulfilled lives, including you. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am superintendent. Item eleven, committee reports. Any additional information out of the business finance committee?
I'm retired.
Alright. Mr. Leonard Barry, nothing for education and foundation, nothing for the community coalition?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any additional information coming from the curriculum personnel committee? Additional information or information coming from the policy committee? We just had a big run of second reading.
Yeah, and I just, uh, just, just a sign, no, there's no additional information, but just a sign note, I just checked. I went on, cause I can go on to policy, um, board books and, um, I looked up, I don't see anything with, I was looking more at what you're talking about, that fund rate. I had, I have, I checked all the way back to two twenty nineteen, I don't see any updates as far as that, I don't, not an update, so I don't see it.
I don't know, that's...
It may be a state thing, but I don't, anything came through as far as the updates.
Or Plant Moran that we had here, it was a woman that presented it to us that that day explained it.
If there is, it's gonna be a GAZB, generally, you know, counting standards.
I think what she was talking about was, and it, it helped me out because we were talking about, you know, people having, you know, send this, you know, fundraiser for one of sports teams, send it to my PayPal account, when it should be run, all run through the district's account. Uh, if it's for export, even though export raises it, goes through the district's accounts, but that money is earmarked and ceded for, for X club because they generate and raise that money. I don't know if that's what, what you were talking about.
It was that same lady, but she was very specific to the change in that particular item in the budget.
My recall was she was saying it had to be run through the district. It can't have all these little side...
We're getting ready for the annual audit anyway, so I'll reach out to our auditors that, there, you know.
Yeah, that's my recall, cause I, I asked that question, cause I was sitting over there and I asked that question and she, she generated.
Wasn't that presentation from Trune?
No, that was from our auditors.
Okay.
That was from our auditors.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Yeah.
Now it's coming back.
Yeah, that was from you.
That was from our auditors.
Yeah.
Yeah, I knew we had heard it.
It's new legislation for this year, though.
Ms. Mump, were you finished on it?
Yes, I'm, yep.
There was no legislative, um, committee needing, uh, update. Board comments. Ms. Collins?
Uh, just congratulations to all the graduates, all the kids that finished school this year, um, and to all the teachers. I hope you guys all enjoy your summer.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil?
Same thing, um, congratulations to all of the graduates. It looks like they had a lot of fun out there, um, in the heat. And, um, and to the teachers, I hope they get some rest this, um, summer. I think we all had, um, a trying year, so, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Mr. Reno?
Yep, um, congrats to our gradu, graduates and, uh, have a happy, safe and restful summer, everyone, we all deserve it, for sure. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Reno. Mr. Munk?
Hey, Mr. President, um, this was the first graduation I have missed as a board member.
I lived for you.
I know, I know, I know. I tried to get here in the car, but that pain was just too, too, too unbearable, so I'm kinda sad about that, but congratulations to our seniors and, uh, I wish you well, um, for our teaching staff, for our custodians and everybody else. Hope you have a wonderful summer. We, as board members, are going to have to make some tough decisions. And they, and you're gonna be uncomfortable in that decision-making. But I will go back to what our facilitators and what we said at our retreat. Our decisions must be made with student focus going forward. You know, Bill put together a great presentation, and if I'm not, if I'm not correct me for wrong, Bill, in the year twenty twenty-four is when we're gonna start going to the negative. I ain't talking about hundred, two hundred thousand, I'm talking about millions of dollars deficit. We are running out of time. We have to start making decisions. And corporations do it all the time, businesses do it all the time. Other school districts do it the same thing that we're talking about. Look at Detroit. Detroit shut down so many buildings to mainstream in order for them to refocus and present theyself in a better way. We are in the same position. We're gonna have to look at cutting costs, refocusing, restructuring, to put ourself in a better place for the students. So it's gonna be uncomfortable. You're not gonna feel good about it, but it's something that gonna have to be done in order for this district to be viable going forward. And if, and this will be a different board. Come election in November, their possibility would be different board members sitting at this table. Come next year, there's possibly gonna be a different superintendent looking, sitting at this table. So me personally, I'm not willing to push nothing off on any other board or superintendent that I can handle now. And that's what I'm about. I'm about making, I got broad shoulders, I come from the corporate world, I came from a situation where it's that I had seven stores that I control and I had to shut three of those down. I'm talking about I had to go in, I had to tell managers, assistant managers, cooks, cashiers, everybody, prep people, you're out of a job. Did I wanna do that? No, but I had to do it for the greater good of the company. And I was chose to do it, and that was my responsibility. So I don't shy away from, from responsibility, I don't shy away from making tough decisions. And that's what we're gonna have to do as a board. We're gonna have to make some tough decisions going forward. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Munk. Dr. McFadden?
First of all, for the, our graduates this year, that was a fun time. It was a really good time. A little long, a little warm, but it was a great time. Now, the good things are out the way. Ms. Munk is absolutely right. You know, I sit on the business committee with him, and we've seen the numbers, and we know what's ahead of us. So we gotta steer the ship correctly. And as we spoke in the past at the workshop, we know we're gonna have a series of workshops. And I'm pretty sure we're gonna have another one, that topic is probably gonna be the major topic of what we need to do before twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, actually. I mean, uh, that's probably coming up soon, so, you know, don't get too comfortable this summer, cause we need to sit down and have this conversation. Other than that, you know, good news, I don't say it's bad news, I think it's good news that we know. Knowing is half the battle, so as long as we know what we need to do and just do it, we'll be okay. Mr. President, that's my comments.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. I wanna sound like a broke, scratched record. Congratulations to the grad, Mount Clemens graduating class of twenty twenty-two. To the valedictorian, Mr. Nevea Williams, um, Mr. Matt McKinnon, who was the emcee and did a great job, uh, brought some humor, uh, to, to the event, um, when he was introducing, uh, participants that were going to speak when, yeah, I said, Mr. Bates graduated in two thousand, nineteen oh-one, or something to that, to that, to that effect, you know? It was, um, I, when, when, before I received a class, I usually give them Earl's, um, pedigree, Earl's link, uh, litany, Earl's litany for success. But they had already been exposed in the heat in the... But they had already been exposed in the heat and the sun to an extremely long keynote address by the, by the keynote address speaker. So I did not do the full litany with them, but if I would've did the full litany with them, we still would've been trying to repeat it. I did a recondensed short version, and if you see the video, you know, they were, they couldn't, they weren't repeating what I was saying, and I just put my head down and just started laughing. And Mr. Monk brought it to my attention that, you know, hey, they made you change what you were saying. I said, yeah, because they weren't saying what I was saying, so I'll say what they said, you know?
Yeah, changed it up. And that's a first. I ain't never seen that, that was a first.
But congratulations to the graduating class of 2022. You have a world of potential. Go out there and, and make it happen. You, you, you heard my colleagues talking about tough decisions, and we made tough decisions in the past, but it never seems like the decision that you made in the past is gonna be as tough as the decision that you have to make going into the future. So we have to wrap our minds around making those tough decisions that's gonna keep this district viable into the future. Excuse me. You heard talking about staff. We got twenty staff, at least twenty staff that we need to hire. And I would hope that we would use this opportunity to use it as an opportunity to diversify our professional teaching staff. We have probably an eighty-nine to ninety percent African-American student body, and we have a professional teaching staff of less than one percent, more than likely. So I hope this is an opportunity that we can take to diversify our professional teaching staff, because it is much needed in this district. Because you cannot tell me, and data shows that when kids sit in classrooms and sees people that look like them, that have commonalities as them, have cultural issues and differences, and the same cultural issues that they have, that they, you know, that they learn better. And data, data shows that. And it's far time that this district, our, our teaching staff is diversified. I'm not saying we, you know, it should reflect our student body, but it should not be less than one percent professional teaching staff consisting of African-American teachings. To the staff, whether it be the professional teaching staff, the administrators, custodians, parapros, bus drivers, anybody, the food service staff, anybody who is, who works in the district, hope you enjoy your time off, enjoy your summer, let the breeze flow through your hair, go on cruises, or do whatever it is that you need to do to refresh and energize yourself, because before you know it, you know, I'm gonna be at this mic saying, wow, it just seems like yesterday that, you know, we, we just let schools out, and now we, here we are for the opening, and I'm saying real optimistically, and with full faith, that opening of the fall for the twenty-two, 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 twenty-three school year in September. So enjoy your summer, and we look back, we look forward to seeing you here fired up and ready to go. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation updates.
Sure, Monk.
Led by member Monk, seconded by member McFadden. Any questions, comments, concerns? Motion to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiation updates. Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes. Motion carries, again, I must hint a rate that there will be no decision that we make after coming out of the executive session. The only decision we'll remove, we do when we come back, is to come out of the executive session and to adjourn the meeting.
Nine eighteen.
Oh, excuse me, yeah. We're going to executive session at nine eighteen. Thank you. Mr. Secretary?
Yep.